Okay, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Would note that Councilmember Sternad is joining us virtually today. Okay, first on our agenda is a special recognition. Turn it over to Rhonda and Chief Kitzmiller.
All right, sounds good. I just wanted to be the one to congratulate Judy on her retirement. I'm glad everyone can celebrate with her. It's very uncommon and very rare for a communications operator dispatcher to actually retire from this career. Burnout and stresses is a big factor and for to make it 30 years in this job is pretty incredible and pretty amazing. Judy rose to the challenge. It is hard on families, but she rose to the challenge and stuck it out for 30 years. I always equate being a dispatcher kind of like being a perpetual student. You learn something new every day, whether it's a new street, a new business, a procedure, an ordinance, or some new equipment or software. It's constant flux of information in and out, changing habits in an instant, sometimes without question, sometimes not knowing why. You've seen the city double in size, the opening of Highway 100, Menards, Walmart, a multitude of schools and neighborhoods that popped up in areas where cornfields used to be. You went from keeping track of calls for service on paper to actually being able to enter them into a computer. From landlines to cell phones, you were there for your community 24/7, good times and bad, you were there. After 30 years of learning, I'd like to congratulate you on your graduation to retirement. So we have a certificate for you. This says Certificate of Retirement Presented to Judy Ward in honor of 30 years of service with the City of Marion, Iowa, Marion Police Department, Marion Public Safety Communications Center. For over 30 years, you dedicated your life to the service of your community. You provided a calm voice to many during their darkest hour. You are the lifeline for some who just needed an ear and a little compassion. You are the partner with every officer and firefighter on every call, not in person, but on the air, always ready to have their back. You have been a coworker, mentor, and friend. You set an example for future communication operators to follow with your service to the city, the department, and the citizens of this community. We are honored to celebrate this milestone with you. You will be greatly missed.
I don't have anything written down. Thank you guys for being here, all of you. I'm used to being heard and not seen, so I'm not used to having all these eyes on me. I'm usually behind the radio. I'm happy to be retiring. I also feel really proud that I was able to be a part of the community, the comm center, the police department for that many years. I'm also ready for some calmness and less sirens and whistles. So with that, I'm off to retirement, I guess. That's all I got.
Judy, we congratulate you on behalf of the entire city and all our staff. Congratulations. You certainly earned this right to retire and we wish you the very best. I appreciate all the members of the department coming out to support Judy and to honor her. So congratulations again and thank you for all your service.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yesterday, we had a brief ceremony in front of City Hall where members of the Civil Rights Commission gathered and we read a proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And I would just like to read it this evening. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. And whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all our citizens. And whereas citizens of Marion, Iowa have the opportunity to participate in the events throughout our city on the King Days of Service, January 18th, 2021, as well as create and implement community service project where they identify the need. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu-Wasely, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a day of service in Marion and call upon the people of the community to pay tribute to the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Jr. Day and throughout the year. Okay. Moving on, we have a presentation regarding the Library Capital Campaign. We have Kelly and Amy with us.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Amy Geiger.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity just to give you a quick update. I thought with all the progress you're seeing in the building site, it would be nice to match that with an update on what's happening on the campaign side of things as well. So as you'll recall, we have a $3.3 million goal. That's the Library Foundation's part of the commitment to the building project, so $3.3 million goal. As of Friday, we hit the $2.5 million mark, which is really just outstanding. We're very pleased with where we're sitting right now at this time. So that leaves a balance of $800,000 that we are working on to close the gap and to be able to announce that we've met goal. I wanted to share quickly some of the gifts that we've received, and I'm not necessarily going to go into individual amounts, but just give you kind of a high level. Some of the key grants that we have received, many of these are probably familiar to you, but Hall Perine was the $500,000 matching gift, and we have met the criteria for that matching gift already. We had the Carver Trust, the Jacoletto Foundation, the Marion Public Library Foundation, the CAT Grant. We're all just really outstanding lead foundation grants and gifts to the campaign. Farmer State Bank came in with a $250,000 gift, which is outstanding. That is our largest city, or I'm sorry, largest business gift to the campaign to date. And then at $50,000, we had our Marion Public Library friends, Transamerica and UFG. At $25,000, we had the Marion Chamber, Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust, Hills Bank, and Booz Lock Insurance. And those are just some of the higher-level gifts that we've received of the campaign. To date, we've had 82 individuals contribute for a total of $297,630. So really outstanding, good momentum, some great gifts, great feedback. Wanted to let you know that we've done some updating of our campaign materials. So our case statement has been updated, and you can actually access that on the Marion Public Library website. So if you go to the website, it's right there on that homepage, and you can click on that. It'll take you to the full layout of the case statements, really very nice, very well done. Not that I'm biased at all, but I think it tells a nice story and it really highlights some great features about why we're doing this and what the end result will be. The other thing that we've updated was the campaign video. And it runs about five and a half, six minutes long, but we wanted to take the opportunity to show that to you today. And that's your cue, Rachel, right? I understand it might be a little bit.
One simple word defines a modern library, and that word is community. It's the language of a community that is learned, nurtured, and shared within a library's walls.
The library is really the heart of the community.
Community is so much more than just a place. It's where our shared culture is created, the sharing of ideas, the growth of aspirations, and exploration of interests. A library is where all that makes a community great overlaps and interlaces into something special like we have here in Marion.
This is where community happens.
Whether it's through books and magazines, computers and devices, or group activities and programs, the Marion Public Library serves a diverse population, a population that is growing as the community grows.
Marion Public Library creates a wonderful atmosphere for families. I know Marion is a young community, and I feel personally that the library is the heart of the town. Just like the kitchen is the heart of the home, the library is the heart of the town. So having a nice library, a beautiful library, and a place for children to come and learn, it brings joy to the community.
I'd like you to meet Julian, a teenager who comes to the library weekly for after-school programming, to gather with friends for his favorite role-playing game called Pathfinder.
The library is a good place to hold this because it's kind of the medium point between people's houses and the school. So it's a very common place for people in the Pathfinder group to come and join.
Julian is finding his path at the library. Now meet Josephine, a fourth grader who can't wait to discover another great story.
The best part about coming into the library, you can just relax, just drop into a chair and get a book and read it there if you want.
But it might not be so simple for future generations. The current building is simply too small to keep up with serving Marion's growing population, which has doubled since the building first opened in the mid-'90s. Simply put, the building has a space crunch. It was built before the internet age, so technology is an afterthought. Network cables are buried in concrete under the building, limiting where technology can be placed or moved. With public internet access and Wi-Fi usage a main part of today's world, the Marion Public Library can only provide 20 computers to the public in a makeshift space, and those computers are usually full. The library's programming grows 200% every year. Unfortunately, a lack of space prohibits more than one program to happen at the same time and can lead to preventing people from taking part. The library's community room, while booked solid, is maxed out on space, forcing some large meetings to be held outside of our community. Help the Marion Public Library take the next step to serve everyone in Marion and our surrounding communities. Be part of our next chapter, the campaign to transform the Marion Public Library. This $3.3 million capital campaign will allow construction of a new, larger library footprint that will be right-sized with the demands and magnitude of our growing city.
Marion is currently the 14th-largest city in Iowa, and we are one of the fastest-growing cities in Iowa. And that growth is expected to continue for the foreseeable future. We're growing quickly. It's one of the most popular places in the region for people and businesses to locate, and we expect to continue growing for some time.
The new Marion Public Library will remain in Uptown Marion, capitalizing on its central location and importance to surrounding neighborhoods. Our next chapter will help the Marion Public Library be a destination library for the city and beyond, allowing for expanded programs to serve more people, including an art room space, a recording studio, a demonstration kitchen, and more. There will be greater access to technology as the building will be ready to connect to resources now and into the future. And there will be more meeting space available for community groups, businesses, and others. Our next chapter will keep the Marion Public Library ready to adapt to future needs for decades to come.
The new library will increase the space from 24,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet. So it will allow us to better serve our growing population and the region and to be able to accommodate that growth into the future.
People should give to this campaign because people believe in Marion. They believe in the community. They believe in the library. There's no vibrant Marion in the future without a vibrant library.
And I actually have a little bit of seed money, a check here from Montessori School of Marion, just because it's the most important thing that you can do in a community. And it's the most important thing that we can do as adults for future generations.
Keep the Marion Public Library the heart of our community.
The library is the heart of the town.
Give from your heart.
The library is about people connecting.
Transform Marion.
Every community that's alive has a library that reflects them.
Transform generations.
I like to read. It's like adventure.
Help write our next chapter and transform the Marion Public Library.
Our next chapter.
Our next chapter.
My next chapter.
Thank you, Rachel, for showing that. Clearly, this was done before the building in the storm. We lost the building in the storm. But I think it helps answer the question, even though we don't have the old building available to us anymore. It still answers the question of why it was and still is important to have a new library. And I think I'm probably preaching to the choir here that you all get that. But I think it really does a nice job of connecting what was and what can be and what will be for the community. And I will be able to send out a link to all of you that can link you to the video if there's somebody that you'd like to share that with. I just want to close with my portion of this and saying there's really two components to any campaign and any campaign reaching its goal. And the first one is that people have a belief in the mission and the value add of the project. And I think that we clearly have strong backing from people that get that, and I think you understand that as well. And I probably have the opportunity to visit with people that understand the value of a library in a community. And it's not a hard sell, which is nice, so we have that. And the other part of that is the right people asking the right people at the right time. And we have quite a variety of volunteers involved in our campaign process. A lot of people that are helping spread the word and make contact. The work continues on, and sometimes that last amount is sometimes more the challenging amount. So all hands on deck to help with that is really the phase we're in now and that final push to get us to our goal. But again, just wanted to give you an update, let you know where we're at. We're working hard behind the scenes to get the goal reached and move forward. And really appreciate the time and the effort and the support that you all have been giving, so thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Is Kelly going to say something?
I'm here, but I think Amy has very well represented us tonight.
I just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity if you wanted to say something. Any questions for Amy or Kelly on the campaign? Okay, I would just add that, as Amy said, it is all hands on deck. And I think that everyone, and such an important community asset, everyone has a role to play. And would encourage everyone to think about that as far as, you know, we all have different circles of acquaintances, people we know, contacts, and a few identify people who may be potential donors who might be interested in participating in this project partnering on it, as so many already have, either to explore that with them yourselves or provide their contact information to Amy, and she can follow up appropriately or find someone to follow up with them. But we do need to all kind of think about how we can help to get this project across the finish line. I would encourage everyone to think about that a little bit. So thank you. Thank you, Amy and Kelly, for all your work. And look forward to seeing the campaign completed with success at cutting the ribbon on the new building. Okay. Moving on with the consent agenda, there is one item, A2, that is marked on page two. Any questions on A1? All right, we'll then go to A2.
So Lynn County has asked City Hall to be a polling location for a special election that will take place March 2nd, which is the date of a work session. So just wanting council guidance on if you want to change that work session date or just combine it with the Thursday regular session.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Any input? Go ahead, Renee.
If you're looking for feedback, I'm available to come Monday. I'd prefer to have the work session just to have time to ask questions and get information before the Thursday votes.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would echo that as well, and I think with this great advance notice on that, hopefully we can make that a reality.
Okay. Do you agree too?
I agree.
Okay. All right, it looks like there's a consensus from everyone that there's support for that. Okay, wonderful. The remainder of page two and three and four, nothing is marked for discussion. Any, yes, go ahead, Renee.
Yep, thanks for the opportunity. On page two, A3, I was looking at the list of those delinquent fees that we do quarterly. And my question is Chapel Ridge of CR Partnership, who is that? They're like 25% of the delinquent fees on separate items.
That's the apartment buildings on 100.
Okay, so I guess my question is, and it looks like what their charges continue to be for our rentals, can we not collect those upfront to kind of save on having to come after people, if you will? Is there a way to do that?
I guess that would be up to the building department normally. So it's based on the rental, how many rental inspections the inspectors have to go out and do. So it's not really an upfront fee because they don't know how many violations there would be or how many times you have to go out there.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. I guess I would just suggest if there's anything they can do on the front end, particularly with this one client. And I, you know, in fairness, I didn't look at three months ago, if these people, you know, were also the same people. But I just noticed. And then the other question is, or comment, it says that we will notify via certified letter if, you know, they don't send the fee. So I'm just wondering if we have an admin fee built in for, you know, having to reach out, doing the certified letter, sending this list. You know, I'm just wondering, I know we do that, and we talked about it when we revised, I think it was the building code fees. I think we kind of increased some of those to capture staff time and those kinds of costs. So I'm wondering, do we already have something like that built in for our quarterly delinquent fee assessment? And if not, should we consider doing something like that?
I believe we added, there's a $5 admin fee, but I think that is only collected on utility delinquent fees. I'd have to look back. It's an older policy that was passed prior to when I started, so we'd have to look into that.
So yeah, and I don't know if by Thursday if it gives you enough time, but I definitely think it's something we should consider since it's a process. It's every quarter. And so I just want to not, you know, these are people who are not doing the right thing. So I certainly want them to at least pay for not doing the right thing and not, you know, spend the staff time on top of the fee that they owe fair and square all of the time that you and other staff has to take to do that. So just something for us to consider for future process change or if we need to pass language to make sure we're recouping your fees and anyone else's. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on any item on page two, three, and four? Okay. On page five, F3 is not marked if there are any questions or comments on that. Otherwise, I'll move on to F4.
Yes, I just wanted to provide a brief update. As we've been working with Seth Green, Mr. Green, regarding the storage garage facility or storage facility on the corner of 13 and 151, he did submit a letter requesting the rezoning of that property to M1, and that went to the Planning Commission at the last meeting. There was a little bit of confusion at the meeting, the public hearing, and the conversation was about two hours long for those that weren't. Or if you had not heard that or if you did not attend that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of land use amendment, but ultimately recommended denial of the rezoning. So we are required to bring that recommendation forward, and so we're setting the date for that public hearing. So there'd be a public hearing at the first meeting in February regarding a request to rezone that corner to M1. Staff did not recommend approval of that. We still do not recommend approval of that. And we can lay out and have that presentation at that meeting prior to or alongside the public hearing. Our staff report was attached, and I think it details the reasoning behind that. But with the application, we're required to bring that forward, and that will be discussed at the February meeting. I don't know if anybody had any chance to look at that or walk through it, or if you had questions, feel free to reach out to me. And we can go from there.
Yes, go ahead, Renee.
So can you just say something again? I'm a little confused. So what did P and Z approve and then deny? I know it was two separate things, but can you explain that a little more?
Yes, so the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the future land use map as a part of the comprehensive plan, which did not support rezoning to a manufacturing district. So they had to amend that, and I think there was a group of folks that were supporting the project and therefore worked through it, and they supported the land use amendment. But when we got to the rezoning, some of those folks kind of backed off the decision to actually rezone the property. So we had two different recommendations, which is kind of odd. The land use doesn't support the zoning. It was a split vote, so we had a 4-3 vote on approving the Land Use Amendment. And then when it came to the zoning, it was a 5-2 vote for denial. So the conversation did switch. I know a few of you have been on the Planning Commission, and we have some new members. I think there was just some confusion with the land use portion of the discussion. So we're looking at having some training on some of that too, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I was a little confused, and I wanted to ask about how the votes came. Okay, thank you for that. Um, yeah, I was a little confused and I wanted to ask about how the votes came down. So we're, we're going to hear it because it passed, even though, um, like it's going to come before us because it passed that, even though the staff recommendation was against it. Is that correct?
So because the, uh, app, because there was an application, the, uh, planning zoning commission only makes a recommendation. Generally, what we do is we'll ask the petitioner after recommendation comes out of P and Z as denial, if they want to proceed. And in this case, they decided they want to proceed. So, um, we'll, uh, I think we're obligated to bring it forward as a recommendation from P and Z as a denial without the withdrawal of the application.
Okay, thank you. I know a lot of time has been spent on that, not even just at this level, but obviously at P and Z and staff time. So I'm glad it's finally coming through the pipe and we can make some decisions.
Just, just as an update, one of the, the, the conversation that was had is that, um, we're, we're reviewing the ordinance to update the ordinance. I think council has directed us to include, uh, language that would provide the opportunity for, uh, climate controlled storage in the BR district. The BR district is ultimately where, um, staff is recommending that corner go, which is a business regional, or a regional business district. And so we would include that, uh, by virtue of coming forward with the rezoning to M1, that changes to a manufacturing district, which we don't support and never have supported and indicated that at the time of the application. Um, so, uh, but the petitioner has decided to move forward in that regard. And so we're, our recommendation was known. Um, his thought is that once it's zone manufacturing, he never has to worry about any ordinance changes. He doesn't have to wait for anything or be, um, under the gun or under the gun to make any decisions. What I have indicated to Mr. Green is that this body, as well as the planning commission, would be the body that would be reviewing the ordinances when the rezoning comes forward to change it to BR. I think it's been pretty clear their support for the project. And if staff brought a proposal that didn't include or allow that to be a permitted use, there would be a lot of, uh, discussion, I'll say, at both board, at both commission and the city council. So it wouldn't be our prerogative to do that in the long run. Um, he's, in, in, in staff's mind, he is trying to, uh, circumvent the whole process by rezoning to M1, which does, isn't supported by our long range plan and therefore we're denying it. But I've asked him if he just lets this play out, give us some time to review the ordinances. It's going to move in that, in the direction he wants it to. So that's kind of a long story of it, but, um, that's how we're, that's how we've been, uh, messaging this from the get-go. And, uh, so, you know, as it comes forward, I'm sure there'll be a, a lot more conversation.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Tom, what, what do you foresee to be the timeline and path to making amendment to the BR designation? As you've referenced.
So, so the, it won't, it doesn't take long to do the research. It's, it's, it's the time to actually amend the code. Any amendment to the code, uh, takes a review by planning commission and then through reading to the city council. So, I mean, they're, they're right there. It's two months. So I'm, would be hopeful that we could at least get something back to the council in the next 30 days and then have some direction to take it to, um, P and Z and then ultimately back to council. So it shouldn't take us too long to get the, the language and a recommendation back to the council. I'd like to bring it back to you guys for a conversation about how we would like that to proceed and then have it directed to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, so, yeah, what I'm hearing then is nominally, there's a probably a, a 60-day timeframe at which that would come back to us for some final action, which may then potentially be satisfying to Mr. Green.
Correct. And, and I, I think it's important to point out that it is a permitted use in the current zoning district. So, I mean, it's, um, his concern is that, that the, the zoning would change. That would not allow it to be a permitted use. My contention is, is that we've got direction from the council to make sure that his use is and that, um, any of those approvals will come through this board, uh, for ultimate decision-making. And therefore the, I guess if there's a risk, I think that risk is pretty minimal. And, uh, I, I would, I would go back and, and also suggest that, you know, from a staff perspective, it takes a while to do the research and come up with the ordinance language. I mean, it does take time, um, and to amend the ordinances. This is one of those situations where, um, we're reacting to a developer's proposal. We're trying to accommodate them, but the real issue is that it's a permitted use. And, and so from our perspective, we've got, we've got things going on. We've got projects. We've got streetscape. We've got other projects. So it is very difficult for us to just stop everything to respond to a developer's request when in all reality, it's a permitted use and the safety net's there that he's not going to get changed to a non-conforming use in the future. So that's, that's the difficulty, um, when you're trying to triage what you're working on. But yeah, we, we're committed to getting that done in the next 30 days. If we get that back at the, at the second meeting, uh, in, in February, which would be less than 30 days, um, you know, we still got to schedule that at the March, potentially at the March P and Z. So then it's still two months after that. So I have indicated that it would, I would likely not be in a position to be able to, or would not like to be in a position where we'd have to move forward that, uh, ward for rezoning, for a map rezoning until such time we have this kind of straightened out. So just don't want to add confusion to the situation. So. Does that make sense?
Renee, you have a second question?
Yeah, ju, uh, just a comment on something you said I, I totally agree with and I just want to underscore. And while I can, um, sympathize with, um, the developer's desire to move forward, we can't let it impact the business of the city and our roadmap and the prioritization of other projects we have. And so I appreciate that your staff is working with him, but also not, you know, puddle jumping and throwing this up at the top ahead of some other things that have been going on a lot longer. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom, is his, uh, plan still to just do the one building and not the traditional storage next to it?
Yep, the, the current plan show, illustrates that, yes.
Okay, good. Cause I think that was an indication from council that that was important. I just, he mentioned that when he last spoke to us, but I haven't, I don't think I've seen anything further that shows that. But, but as long as you're comfortable with that.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on this item? All right, anything on F5 while time is still standing here? Okay, moving on to the second consent agenda. Nothing is marked. Any particular items that, uh, council members would like to discuss? If there are, I will have the mayor pro temp handle it. None? Okay, under the regular agenda, the first item is A1 administrative services. And this one I will turn over to Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay. Bon, is this you?
Yeah, hopefully I won't get, uh, too much echo on it this time around. We have this one and, uh, agenda item A2 following are both development agreements that were, uh, impacted by events outside of the developer's control. And so was Crook Creek Crossing, um, this development, uh, as you know, they've been under construction. They've built a commercial building within the last year, opened Pizza Ranch and several other restaurants around there. But the hotel itself was delayed and it's kind of a centerpiece of this development. There were a couple of things that contributed to that. One was Prospect Meadows getting a later start than they initially thought. And then Prospect Meadows getting only about half of a season due to COVID response. So it's, this hotel is one that is fairly directly tied to the anticipated tourism that that entity is going to create. So they asked to have the timelines in the agreement adjusted and we took, uh, and put those in there and then also cleaned up some of the other language in it, um, because it was passed in 2017 for some of the things that have actually already occurred since then. It also let us change the phasing to match that, um, they originally anticipated that this was going to be 17 different lots and they actually pared it down substantially to much larger lots. So, um, we're not altering the amount that anybody is receiving or the amount that the council originally approved. It's just a matter of timing and when those, uh, benefits could start for the developer.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Yes, Renee?
This is indirectly related and, yeah, I'm sitting here like, should I ask or not ask? Um, but it's been in my mind too many times to not ask. Um, so this isn't ours per se, but we're obviously involved. And I'm just curious about the name Squawk Creek, right? I mean, we went through this with Lynn County. We all unanimously agreed to change that. I'm personally not offended, but I'm just wondering, you know, before there's more and more businesses there with that label that we would maybe foresee having people change things down the road. It, has there been any discussion from this group or from the city in general about this particular, um, word being, you know, changing that? I'm just curious.
The developer has indicated that they are going to rebrand the area, but they haven't brought anything forward yet. So no new name has been proposed.
But there, it's on their radar and they all work it out and that won't have anything to do with us in terms of costing?
Correct.
Terrific, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Grant?
I think I detected in the agreement that, um, would minimally include 60 guest rooms. What is their current projection? Is it 60 or more?
Uh, the, the one that was presented most recently was actually 102, if memory serves me correctly. So larger than that.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, so A2, that, with me as all?
Go ahead.
So A2, um, this is a similar situation with a development agreement with Synergy Equity Partners. Now, this one was a little bit unique because one of the challenges that, um, Synergy was encountering with attempting to market this facility specifically to a restaurant is that when you looked around the metro area, um, a lot of their competition was in areas that already have higher traffic counts, but also in subsidized facilities. So, uh, the city of Cedar Rapids had subsidized the development across the street from Target. They had subsidized the fountains out off of Edgewood. And so the developer wanted to know if the city would contemplate a tool that would allow them to be able to equalize or level the playing field when it came to renting to a restaurant user. And so, as you can imagine, trying to restaurant, or trying to market to a food and beverage place to open in 2020 was extremely challenging since they didn't know if they could be open sometimes from one week to the next. Uh, but now they have been working with a, a potential restaurateur for coming in there and are asking for the same thing, if we would be willing to back up the, uh, dates that are contemplated in the agreement. So it was reasonable under the circumstances and the economic development committee recommended approval. Again, no change in dollar amounts, just a change in, uh, start and end dates of the, uh, proposed incentive.
Yes, go ahead, Renee.
Thanks. I just want to make a general comment, like with the last one. You know, I think we do a lot for our businesses here, um, and this is unprecedented. I'm just glad people aren't shuttering and going away. I know a lot have. So, you know, as a council person, I sit here and I hope that more people come and ask for this kind of help if it helps them preserve their business. I'm all in favor of this and the last one. And, you know, just want to, um, you know, we're going to be wearing masks for a long time and the vaccine rollout is slow. And so I, I just would rather people come to us and ask for this kind of help or other creative solutions where we can keep them instead of losing them because we've been building so much. So, um, I like, I like these coming to us.
Other comments or questions? Okay. So A4?
Yes, Your Honor, this is Chief Crable.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening. Um, I am requesting that this item remain tabled until the council meetings that, to be held on February 2nd and 4th. Um, I have initiated some dialogue with the union and the lieutenant candidates and we have not yet decided on which of the legal options we want to follow. Um, we're giving this a lot of attention and want to do what's best for what the situation is for all of us involved. So I am requesting that this be tabled, remain tabled until February 2nd and 4th.
So A3 and A4 would just be removed from the agenda? Okay. Just making that clear for everyone. Any questions for the chief on that item? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, A5 through A7 are not marked. Any questions on those? B1 and B2? Move on to B3 then.
Your Honor and Council, thank you. Uh, item number three, uh, Thursday, we will have a public hearing, uh, to, uh, award, uh, potential contract for, uh, a portion of the waterway debris removal. This is for the processing and haul out of the vegetative debris. Um, right now, we are anticipating volumes closer to about 500,000 cubic yards. Uh, we have had interest. I've had over four, uh, respondents reach out on information on this. So, uh, staff will have a recommendation, uh, on Thursday. Uh, we are opening the bids Thursday morning and so we'll be ready to go for Thursday evening to award those bids.
500,000 from the, from the waterways?
We think so.
So that would be 1.3 million total?
1.5.
1.5, oh, I thought the initial was?
So we're a little bit closer to a million from the right away.
Okay.
And, um, what has hap, what we think has happened, once the, uh, winter conditions set in, the soil's got very unstable. So you drive around Marion, if you're close to waterway, you can see the trees are just starting to, to tip over, entire riposte and everything. So, um, we'll do our best. Uh, June is a goal. We want to be wrapped up by June, but, uh, we'll do our best. So.
Okay, questions on this item for Ryan? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so two, two quick questions, Ryan. Uh, first, what was the original estimate? And now all of a sudden, how did we go from, we originally were talking just one bid? How did we go now from one to four?
And so we had the initial bid for the waterway removals. That's, that's for the crews to work in actual waterways.
Right.
This bid is to renew the contract for the, for the grinding or the chipping and the haul out of the vegetative materials.
Oh, I got you. I'm sorry, the removal, the, the chipping process.
When we originally procured that, that was in that 90-day emergency time period. And so we thought it'd be best to go ahead and rebid this, this.
Okay, I was thinking the front end and now we're talking about the back end of the materials.
And in terms of the volumes, um, we initially walked the waterways. We were pretty comfortable at 300 to 400,000 cubic yards. Since winter hit, we're seeing a lot more vegetative debris, uh, fall down. So.
Okay. Other questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Under public safety, there are two items that are not marked. Any questions on those? Okay, under parks, first item is, or the only item is marked. Is Seth here?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Um, I did, I did want to highlight this section. Uh, we have four, uh, four roofs in the park system, pavilions to restrooms, facilities that, uh, were, uh, contracting out, uh, the roof repairs from Duracho. Uh, all these repairs will be covered under insurance. Uh, there are a couple roofs out there in the park system, Donnelly Park, uh, in Hannah Park, that will be, uh, taken care of in-house. Uh, just with the size, it didn't make sense to contract out. And so I did just want to take note of those, uh, as those were not, uh, called out in, in to this plan. But this should, uh, uh, be all the roofs, uh, in our park system, uh, with the exception of our office building, uh, left for, uh, repairs for Duracho. So, uh, the plan is to, uh, weather depending, uh, to be able to start this, uh, when, when weather breaks and, uh, have it, uh, done in time for summer.
Okay, questions for Seth? Thank you, Seth. Moving on to engineering, E1?
Yes, Your Honor, so E1 through E5 will all be regarding the, the temporary library parking on Seventh Avenue. Um, Rachel has received a couple extra correspondence that will be forwarded to city council. Um, they were in favor so far that I've seen. Um, so we'll have Brooke Poutree with the uptown has reached out to all the business owners as well to get their input and provide that on Thursday.
Questions? That was E1 through E5. Um, while Mike is, uh, at the podium, any questions on E6 through E10?
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Community development, F one is marked. This would be F one and F two.
Thought I was able to finish a couple of staff reports.
Usually he has every item marked. This time he only had this time he only had a couple of them.
Wow. Yeah, so the, I I just wanted to provide an update on the request to vacate the alley. Um, we talked about this at the last meeting. I I don't really have much to update as relates to ownership, but I think what we've decided to do is we've had the public hearing, we've opened for two meetings. And it's not gonna hurt to vacate it, and therefore, if we do find out that it is an alley, it's been vacated. What we won't do is proceed with a sale until we know that we have some owner title to the property and proceed from there, so we'll go, uh, we would request to move through the public hearing on Thursday and then proceed with the vacation and then uh we'll we'll let it stand from there until and unless we find that we have ownership.
Any, yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Tom, this is uh something I failed to ask the last time. So the applicant is asking for the vacation and subsequent purchase, correct?
Yeah.
Would they then, i- in in consummating that purchase, would they then in fact get that entire vacated parcel?
What what we do, um, and I I would have to uh, ask staff where they are in these conversations is what we do is we go and we try to split that. Let's say we'd split it east-west and then offer each person has offered their proportionate share of that alley before one person would get the whole alley.
Okay, but it it in pending those offers and then subsequent um, I guess denials or uh rejections, that one person could in fact own that entire vacated alley.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Other questions on that? F three, Tom?
So F three, on Thursday, there'll be a public hearing regarding the annexation of property uh east of town, north of the airport, north and west of the airport as indicated on the map above. It's a hundred percent voluntary annexation petition and uh I guess we'll have the opportunity to hear from folks, but certainly staff's recommending approval of this. It is identified in our comp plan as a growth area and uh so it would be a great addition to the city.
Questions on that? That would be F three and F four? Yes, Renee?
I'm just curious, has staff heard from anyone yet? And if so, what kind of comments do they have?
I I have not heard from from anyone at this point. I've not had any reports that there's been any issues with the proposed annexation. I can't remember if the property owner to the east is the same as the applicant. They may not be, or they're they're not, okay, yeah. So not not the same as the applicant, but the same as the contract purchaser, so. No, I've not. If I if I hear anything between now and the public hearing, I'll definitely let the council know.
Okay. So F five and F six are not marked. Any questions on those? Then move on to F seven?
Um, F seven, uh, so there was a request uh from the developer that's annexing the property at a meeting, I believe in December, in which they were requesting the city uh start the process of of working through a planning exercise in the area that he's annexing. Um, I believe at that time, there was a discussion that he had presented a a number of proposals that included land swaps with the city and developer proposals out in this area. The city has property, uh, the school district has property. And then there's an area that's been designated specifically for a water tower. Um, just north and west of where the 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 P is on the planning area, so um there were a couple different renditions provided to the city. None of really, none of which were really acceptable to staff as we moved through that process, so they so they did take some time and spent some money doing that. From my perspective as a planner, this is not a lot different than what we did out at the neighborhood in Indian Creek um and just proceeded to to work through and understanding this is gonna be a growth area. Um, you know, you're looking at over a hundred acres worth of development activity, so it would make sense that rather than push this onto the developer, that the city would be actively pursuing uh development plan and development scenarios for for this area. You can see we're proposing to reach a little bit outside the boundaries and uh also address how property would develop along one fifty-one and then uh uh over to what I would consider the next section line, or really where that north-south road would come in on the half-mile spacing for uh access to one fifty-one. And that way, we really have an opportunity to kind of have a a planned area and when we do see receive or receive development proposals, we'd be able to react appropriately, so uh, I know there was conversation at the last meeting about developer developer participation in it. Uh, we we did not do that with the neighborhood plan and we've not done that um in our other longer plan, longer range planning activities. Currently, we're working with uh the city of Cedar Rapids on the west side of town, developing a scope of work for a conversation about a joint planning exercise where our two cities come together over by Tower Terrace Road and Albernett, and that too involves a lot of developers in the development community, but we would, we would not be proposing that they be a a part of that, that planning exercise or paying for a portion of that that planning exercise, so um if if I just want the council to understand where we're coming from. It's a more of a community planning exercise than it is a developer one. But if, you know, that's that's kind of the conversation that I heard. I just didn't want it to be to be confusing as I brought it forward and suggesting that it would be a city city project. Uh, one of the ways that we've looked at funding this is upon annexation, the area would be uh encapsulated into an urban uh renewal area, and then we'd we would use the taxes generated from that specific area um to to plan, plan the area, and then you'd have the taxes being generated by the development in that area actually paying for the cost to actually plan the area, so the idea is that we wouldn't be taking from the general fund and and working, so the whole community wouldn't be a very specific planning exercise. We can't really access those funds until the property's annexed and the urban revi- renewal areas in place, and then we would bill it back, so there may be some financing involved in that, but that's kind of how we were talking about it internally. I just know there was some conversation class meeting about uh about developer being a part of that, so that's, that's how staff was proposing to proceed and, you know, I'm from our perspective, so.
Questions? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Tom, so um, I think somewhere along the line, we talked about this, but it kind of blurs together a bit on things that relate to one of my favorite topics, the airport. So for any activity that is generating planning, um, I I hope that what we have is a fundamental input of any requirements for uh airspace and approach planning that needs to be encompassed into what would be built in this area appropriately.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, we already know that the way the approach zone addresses some of this property and some of the proposals that have already been kind of vetted, that there was some conflict. So that that would be something we'd need to address. I I already know as well that um, there's a change in the ordinance that that needs to be accomplished, just because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that we allow it in one area and we do, we don't in another. So I think it's just some tweaking that needs to be done with that ordinance as well as it relates to how a property develops north of the airport.
So that, just the other thing that comes to mind is, is I know we're um, we're, right now, we have a runway of a fixed length. And if there's any future consideration to lengthen that runway, does that then change the approach profile from the north? And it and so let's assume that ten, fifteen years out, we achieve that state. I hope that our uh planning constraints for this parcel would encompass an expansion of of the runway length, so just it I don't know that there would be any contention there. But I just think that's worth examining as we ultimately do planning for this area. How does that mesh with long haul planning for the airport?
Yeah, I, and and to that point, I I'd have to look specific. I believe that we anticipated that extension north as a as a part of the airport overlay zone. Clearly, if we were talking about on the south side, we got a whole another can of worms to talk about because you got east-west and 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 all of that, but this area, I think, I think we're set up and are cognizant of that, and we'd be able to respond to that pretty pretty easily, and it wouldn't create a whole lot of conversation about the broader contextual issue with the airport on how that's gonna grow, so um, I think we're it'll be it'll be a lot easier on the north side than it will be on the on the south as we talk about growth areas. Yep. I do, just, I guess, uh, preface, what's coming down the road would be what happens with the area east of the airport and south as we start talking about limitations on industrial growth, but I'm, that's not right now, so we've kind of split up that conversation about trying to do this uh and then addressing the airport in south at a completely different time, so that we're not kind of con- confusing the issues of of this particular area with that south area. I know the developer is really wanting to get a plan in place and start moving forward, so. Any questions? I what I what I would uh uh, expect to do is 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 bring back a scope of work and then we can, and between now and that scope, I can get a cost estimate together so everybody kind of knows what we're talking about in general dollar numbers, and that that way we're moving forward with with more knowledge. I just wanted to be able to get direction from the council after the request that was brought in.
Any objections or concerns about proceeding with this scope of work? Or putting together the scope of work for consideration? Yes, go ahead.
No, again, I I completely support it. I think what was done out at the neighborhood at Indian Creek, I think this will replicate that on a smaller scale and that planning in advance lets everybody know that's even thinking about doing any further development out there or or building or buying land, what they can do and what's planned out there, so to me, it's an excellent idea.
Other thoughts or questions? Okay, F eight?
Uh, just quickly, uh, not not a lot to to do here, just, uh, you know, as a part of the airport uh overlay ordinance that was adopted, it did create or provide the provision uh for the city to create a airport uh zoning board of adjustment that would uh address any variances to the airport overlay ordinance as it sits, as it sits, no different than the city's zoning board of adjustment or the county zoning board of adjustment. This one, however, is a joint jurisdictional board that's created because we got the overlay for Marion is the same ordinance. It's in the county, so we want to have a board that's um weighing the two political bodies as it moves forward. Um, the ordinance has been in place for, I don't know, I want to say six or eight months now, so we probably need to get that established. I don't see it meeting a whole lot. Um, and so we we do need to establish it has the same, essentially the same rules and uh regs as the city zoning board of adjustment, be five-member board, two from the city, two from the county, and one appointment from the uh Marion Airport Committee itself, so. Um, and they would review, like I said, variances. We, I don't, just briefly, we had a tower fall on the northeast side of Marion. The uh WMT Tower, um, and I was, that happened with the Duracho, of course. And just three months prior to that, I remember when we were developing the ordinance, I said, I said to a small group, I said, well, we got three towers on the northeast side of 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 town that are clearly legal non-conforming uses because I think the one's four hundred and fifty some feet tall and the maximum ceiling in that area is a hundred and fifty feet. I said, but we'll never have to deal with that. Those things never fall down. So, and then one fell down. So I was really panicked there, like the week after uh the ratio, they said uh they wanted to rebuild, and I'm like, well, they're gonna have to get a variance, and we're gonna have to, like, we just got this ordinance adopted, we're gonna have our first variance challenge in the first three months, and so anyway, going, long story short, and it is important, I guess the council knows this as well. Those three towers are connected and they really operate as one facility. Um, there, there's a lot of undergrounding and and the controls that go to one specific area. Um, and the owners of that has have provided us this uh are have indicated to us, and I'm waiting, awaiting the uh the actual analysis, that the loss of that one tower does not equal seventy-five percent of the value of the entire structure, and therefore, they can rebuild it as a legal non-conforming use because they haven't exceeded that seventy-five percent value. Of course, my initial thought was the tower fell, that's definitely beyond seventy-five percent of the value of that one tower. So they will be allowed to rebuild that in the county um consistent with the ordinance, but and that's because it was not destroyed uh beyond the seventy-five percent, so as we talk about legal non-conforming uses and co- this is just another example of one of those that was uh addressed through uh Duracho, so. That was not short, like I said, it was gonna be. Any questions?
Just go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Tom, just uh a comment, was it, was it the four hundred and twenty-four foot tower that fell, did you say?
Uh, no, it was not. It was one that was about a hundred foot shorter.
Okay.
It was the one furthest west uh towards um highway thirteen.
Well, ju- just as a benchmark for council's uh knowledge, one, one of the towers is four hundred and four feet tall. Another one is four twenty-four, and the other remaining one is two hundred and forty-four. Anyway.
I think it's the smaller one.
So so that maybe fits with that metric of total value of all combined structures.
And it helps that it was the shortest one.
Other questions on this item? Okay, thank you, Tom. Under the library, there are two items that are not marked. Any questions on those? Otherwise, we'll move on to other department discussion. We have two items that are both marked. First one is floodplain development permit associated with the Indian Creek Trail.
Yes, your honor, so as part of anytime work is done in the floodplain, I as the city engineer and the floodplain manager. So this trail starts from the north side of the Donnelly Park Bridge um on the Boyson Trail, goes along Indian Creek and will eventually tie into the future Tower Terrace. So obviously, this is going along the creek so that there are some floodways there. So as part of your packet, the D and R permits are in there um and the application itself, so the city of Marion is applying for a floodplain permit to itself, um and I am the floodplain manager, so I'm authorizing that, so we do this as an information item so that if citizens or council know what's going on, typically, this is more of a developer coming and asking, so similar to the Bowman Meadows area where they're potentially, you know, putting some development in the floodplain, that would be more the application that we would see. But recently, we've been building quite a few trails, um, the Seamar Trail and those that are in the floodway, and so we have to go through this process before we issue ourselves a permit. So this is just an informational item to let you know that it's it's happening so that if you have concerned citizens, everyone's on the same page. So I would open it up. If anybody has any questions about it, there's quite a bit of information in your packet.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Mike, is is this something that ultimately for construction would end up going uh forward under the MPO?
Uh, so this is an MPO project, um, the STP number that's associated with it. Um, but whether or not it's part of an MPO project or not, if it's in the floodway, it has to have a floodway permit.
Sure, okay. And just another general question, um, roughly at this point in time, how much what percentage of our trails are in floodplains?
Um, I would have to look into that and get back to you. I I wouldn't really give that number, but I would say quite a few of them are along
Fifty percent, twenty-five percent?
Um, Seth might be able to estimate that better, being that they maintain them, but. Seth might be able to estimate that better, being that they maintain them, but. With the lime trails, obviously, they get them washed out quite a bit with the being in the floodplain, but.
Just curiosity, that's all. And and by the way, I would understand why we would want to put a trail in those locations because of the scenic. Nature of those areas and its perfect use versus a high dollar item going into that area only to be potentially damaged under flood, so. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from Mike on item number one? Okay, number two?
So item number two, this was an item that we talked about back in twenty nineteen and I included the previous council memo from twenty nineteen with your council packet. And this is regarding the oversized overload truck permits. So we've done some additional work on it and now I'm to the point where I need a little decision making from the policy board. So I don't know if we want to go line by line and talk about them. But I guess the first one is, do does council want to still go forward with the permit?
Okay, I think Mike's looking for input on this. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I if I recall correctly, one of the major items of discussion. And part of the presentation you you gave back in nineteen. Was the cost benefit analysis. In other words, how much are we really going to gain? Money from from the fees and 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 given issuing the permits versus the cost of trying to administer it. I think that was a key decision point of whether it even made sense to go forward. So is there anything that? Can you can throw out that says it makes sense to? To do it versus just doing it?
Yeah, so it there would be some money that would be generated. It's not going to be a lot. You know, the permits themselves, I'm assuming once we do this, it's going to take some time to actually get compliance because they're not used to having to pull permits. There is a group of them that we do the hold harmlessness right now, just so that if a state officer was to pull over, they have a mode to to not get a ticket. There were some stats in there of about how many permits are pulled, you know, that might get us forty thousand. It is going to take some time to do that for my admin to do that. And then depending on how some of these other questions are answered, for example. The way that the ordinance reads right now, city council has to approve every permit. So if I have to write a memo every time a permit is going to be issued, then I would say there's no way. So yeah, it depends on how burdensome we want to make this and and whether we feel it's value added. I certainly have no issue doing it, even if it's a a small net gain, if it's something that's going to generate some funds. It's not going to be a big windfall by any means.
Well, again, I think my recollection began back from nineteen is my opinion at that point was it was so marginal. I'm not sure it was worth all the extra effort to move forward on it. And I know we've done some extra work. Cedar Rapids is a little different situation, a bigger city than than Marion, but. I mean, that's kind of where I would rest my decision is. I'm going to throw something in there just to have something new in place because it's not necessarily a significant. Net number that that would impress me.
Yeah, so to give you an idea, when we reconstructed A Avenue, which did include storm sewers, sanitary and some water. That short section between South Eleventh and South Fifteenth was four hundred thousand dollars to give you an idea. So we're talking about maybe forty thousand.
Yeah.
So just.
Mayor, I would like to weigh in on this one.
But that was total fees, though. That's not a net. It's forty thousand, your estimated net? Or is that the total fees and then you got all the all the the time to manage it, administrate it, bring it to city council, et cetera?
Yeah, because we haven't done it, it's it's a guess.
Yeah.
Collette, go ahead.
Just a follow up question to that. Are there other benefits besides the just the financial gain that we would get from doing something like this? From your perspective?
Possibly monitoring the the vehicles more to make sure that they're on the routes, assuming they're actually getting the permits and following through with it.
Is that the only?
That's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, did you have a comment? I thought I heard you.
Yes, yes, thank you, your honor. I do. I remember that conversation vividly as well and I don't feel that it fell short due to a financial revenue. As to why we didn't pursue with that, so I do not agree with Councilman Jensen's. Comment there. I am totally in favor of imposing what is technically and currently already. Our laws, we just have chosen not to enforce them. We need to stand fast with. Imposing these weight restriction limits on there. We've already missed several years of not collecting these fees and and permits. What revenues do come in should be reallocated towards the infrastructure, how little they are, so. I'm going to be voting in favor that we move forward and direct staff to do that. I feel that when we last spoke of it, it was something that Mike was going to take back for. Further review, which is exactly what he's done here. So this has nothing to do with what the financial. Windfall would be of this as as much as trying to collect back some of those things. We all. Are witnessing these streets and how terribly buckled and broken down they are and that's as a result of us not. Imposing those from years gone by, so. No matter what our distance is as far as going into the future, we've we've missed the boat on this already as far as collecting these these fees, so. I'm going to stand that we move forward with going back to enforcing what is already. On the books that we have not been enforcing. Thank you.
So what you're saying, Randy, is that this the real reason for this is to help. Have this these oversized. Loads or trucks pay for the wear and tear, the extra wear and tear on our roads?
That that is correct. We, a lot of our.
I want to make sure that's clear for everybody.
Yeah, yep, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead. So I I do appreciate Steve's comment about the cost benefit here and. As I've been thinking about this, I'm wondering if. The base fees that are charged on an annual basis wouldn't fundamentally pay for the administration of the program. But that leads me then to maybe a a different consideration. If in fact, we find somebody operating within city limits that has not. Paid the necessary fees to do so and are also perhaps operating outside of designated truck traffic areas. Does this position position us to collect penalties? For that malop operation that would in fact then be meaningful over time relative to then. Funding, helping fund road repair. I guess what I'm trying to understand is is what sort of financial benefit is there through enhanced? Enforcement that is enabled by having having this in place?
I'll have the chief come up and help me out a little bit here, but for the most part, these type of violations are written by the state D O T. And not necessarily city of Marion, but I'll let the chief go into further detail on that.
Yeah, I think the challenge for us is is. How do we detect that? You know, if we're talking about a overweight limit. We don't have a scale here in town that we can use. I mean, we could estimate based on a like a bill elating, but I don't know. When the state enforces that, I know the D O T guys have like portable scales that they bring out for those. So I don't know from a court purpose, if just going by the bill elating and looking what the weight is on that, if that's sufficient for a ticket. And if it would hold up.
So what about if if the situation is it is a an operator who has not? Got the got the permit in place, what's our enforcement posture there and and the penalty that might be assigned?
I think we still have to show that the truck is overweight to begin with, but I think there certainly would be a ticket in there. I mean, we could always call the D O T to come out if we had a suspicion. About a truck or a particular load.
Well, I guess what I'm I I I'm sorry, but I I'm not worried about the weight of the truck. I am asking if the truck is not permitted under this system. Does that open up an enhanced enforcement possibility for us? With with penalties that may in fact be substantial enough over time to provide some. Benefit for road repair. See, that I I'm trying to set aside if the trucks overweight or not. It's whether or not they're permitted and what does that do relative to?
Well, I guess I would come back to again, if it's not permitted, how do I know the trucks? I gotta know the trucks overweight, whether they have a permit, if they've got a permit. And again, if that's going by the bill of lighting.
So these permits would only be necessary if the truck is operating overweight? Okay, so I, okay, now I'm. As I loop back on this then. Isn't isn't a major source of road damage large trucks in general? So then I'm wondering, wouldn't we want to permit trucks in general? Versus just those that are intending to operate overweight, which alleviates some enforcement. Determination that you might have to make, Chief. I guess I'm trying to understand, is it, are we only concerned about overweight trucks or are we just? Concerned about the amount of truck traffic and the damage that it's derived that it's imparting on our road beds?
So I guess I'll clarify a little bit. So we do get the road use tax that comes from diesel and gas fuels that come from those. Semis that are large, that do damage streets. But they have a certain capacity. If they're under a certain weight limit, there's not a special permit that they have to have. If they have a certain amount of weight or their certain width or height, then they have to get a special permit to make sure they have those clearances. So that's all that we're talking about is those that are overweight, over height. Or so just the the regular truck. So that's what the chief's problem is, is he doesn't have probable cause to pull him over because he doesn't know how much they actually weigh. Versus the D O T can pull over any commercial vehicle just to check them.
Right, and I I'm sorry, I apologize for taking us down that rabbit hole. I I I missed the distinction there that it was. Specifically for oversized or overrated was the was the permitting posture, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Renee has a question.
Your rabbit hole led to a question, so no problem. Do any neighboring cities have just a truck permit, not specifically overweight, oversized? But doesn't Cedar Rapids have just a permitting for those kinds of construction vehicles or no?
I don't, I believe it's just the oversized overweight and that's where we pulled our policy from as well, because again, if they there's a standard. Weight and if you're below that standard weight, you don't need a special permit. It's your C D L license.
Right.
Right, it's a state.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mike, you had a series of questions in your memo that you wanted.
Yes, but I guess I want to make sure we're getting past one first, otherwise the rest are.
Right. Yes, go ahead.
I know you're looking for direction, so I guess my two cents would be. It doesn't really seem like we have a way to enforce knowing what the parameters are based on what the chief said, so. I don't like passing new policies for things that are unenforceable. We don't have scales, we don't have weight, it's out of our control with the D O T. You know, then I'm reminded of the comment that came up recently about a citizen complaining about construction trucks going down. McGowan or or something like that. So I I would love for us to have a way to. Right, but I'm just saying, I would love to have as much control over this to protect and preserve our streets. We're growing communities, we're going to have a lot of these vehicles in, but I don't see a good enough solution in place for us to do something like this. Currently.
Hey, go ahead, Will.
So does the D O T currently patrol Marion to look for oversized overweight?
So generally, I would say not. I mean, the again, the the police department could call and ask for that reinforcement. Again, when this happened in twenty nineteen, since I've been at the city, this hasn't been an issue. He just happened to. Pull over a vehicle that was leaving the city of Marion entering highway one hundred. And so in that case, they got a citation because our ordinance currently reads that you must have a truck permit, but we have no such thing. So in that case, they did. I don't know if that's something we could reach out and have them do more enforcement.
That's what I was wondering, if we put a policy in place or a permit in place, are they going to patrol more frequently?
I'm sure we can ask, but again, it is a third party, so we don't have control over that.
Go ahead, Steve.
So what you just described, the situation and the example that was in your letter in here, that came back in nineteen. So our ordinance has not changed. So if another if an oversized truck comes through again and gets stopped in Marion. Then there is the same situation applies. That that individual faced that our ordinance requires a permit, but we have no policy to issue one.
Correct. So what we're doing in the interim, because we knew this discussion was coming back, is we've issued truck permits as hold harmlessness. Temporarily until we figure out what we're doing with this. So right now, for example, Rachi has already submitted theirs for this year to do the hold harmless, which kind of spurred bringing those back. And so we just, there's no charge for that. We just have them fill out a form, I sign it. And that way, it's just a stopgap for now until we figure out what procedure we want to move forward with.
So if somebody's bringing a an oversized load in into Marion, is it their responsibility to check on every city that they drive in or through?
Yep, and some are are really good about it. They'll call ahead and give us the route and all that stuff and others just drive through. So we did have some issues a couple of years ago because of business one fifty-one and we had some really long semis that got stuck on the roundabouts.
All different issues aside from whether we charge a fee or not. No, I mean, those are all. Having a permit, a fee for a permit isn't going to change any of that.
No, but that would be something where we could say, okay, we had a permit for a single use, you didn't get that and so then the state could issue a citation.
Right.
Let's say that again.
So there's annual permits, there's single use permits. So if they would have given us our the route and showing, going through the roundabouts. And we saw how long they were, we would have said, you're not going to fit, you need to use highway one hundred, not business one fifty-one. And so we could avoided that situation if they would have followed the procedure, should we have an actual procedure to follow?
So there may be other motivation besides the fees to have it?
Yes, if we can get people to comply.
Yeah. But then still, the problem remains what Renee talked about. We don't really have a way to, but but I guess they. She's made a good point, but then you're talking about if they call ahead.
Yeah, they call ahead and follow procedure that we have a policy to to do the permit, we review the.
They're self-reporting.
Yep.
So that's a that's a different. Different issue, okay.
Your honor, I have a follow up question.
Sure, let's let can we wait and have Collette go first, since she hasn't made a comment yet, so?
Yes, that's fine. I'm sorry, I cannot see everybody, so thank you.
Oh, I know. So thank you. Go ahead.
Sure, so I thought I had, I thought I knew what I was going to say until we just had this recent conversation, right? I was with Renee about enforcement. And I hear Randy, I think in theory, right, it makes sense that these folks are paying for using our roads, but if we can't enforce it. Why would we have such a policy? But it's interesting because folks are, they must, they do it in other communities, so they know. They assume that they have to do it here in Marion and we have that on the books, we just don't have a process for it. So I guess what I'm hearing from you is maybe we really can't enforce it, it's hard to enforce, but. We do know that folks are being honest and they're applying or wanting to apply for these permits, right?
Some, yes.
Okay.
They kind of hoping people will comply on their own.
Yeah, and again, I'm sure that if we have a an issue with a lot of vehicles, we can call the state department and see if they would come in and do enforcement. But again, they are a third party, kind of like when we asked the D O T to lower the speed limits.
Sure, I I just wanted to make sure I heard you right, right? That folks are wanting to comply. I mean, they're calling and trying to comply, but we just don't have a process for it right now, so, okay.
I mean, right now, you have to have a state permit, a county permit, there's a Cedar Rapids permit, so there's there are others that have the permits, so. It's not an unknown out there.
Besides our, so do all of our local communities here require permits or is it just Cedar Rapids?
Those do. I don't know that Hyawath and Robin, I I haven't looked into it, but they they may, they're a little smaller than us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Randy?
Thank you. I I just wanted to kind of, I think we kind of got off track, or at least what I feel we need to do is is. Address the first layer of the onion and that is just determining whether or not we're going to enforce the permit. Address the first layer of the onion, and that is just determining whether or not we're going to enforce the permits themselves. Enforcing them is a whole different deal, and what the DOT decides what they want to do is up to them, but. In our situation, what's happening is, is when people permit and they know their, their, their travel destination. So if they're doing a project in downtown Cedar Rapids and they need to get and haul material to Springville. They know their routes and they know what cities they're going through, and they know what cities they're permitted in. Currently, right now, Marion, because we do not enforce it and we are not looking in that direction, I do know for a fact that there are general contractors that are hauling through town. Because they don't, it's the shortest route and they understand their, their travel, so I would like to see us deal with the first issue first. I'm not worried about the enforcing of it as opposed to. Enforcing having the permits, because when the Iowa DOT stops them and they ask for the permits and they cannot validate those. And currently, right now, our code states that they are to have that, that's why that driver was cited. We had, we had, and we did submit a letter to explain to the DOT that we, we were not enforcing it and to give them a free get out of jail pass. So what I'm trying, what I would like us to see do is deal with the first issue, and that is, is just honoring the permits. By application and letting people know that we're not any longer going to be writing letters for waiver to the DOT. If you are stopped in our community and you do not have the proper paperwork. Like some other people have said, there are companies that are doing that, but then there are also companies that know exactly the routes that they can take. Because they're required with minimal fees and permits, so I think we need to protect our streets. To the best that we can, because again, we're running way over limit trucks down side streets. For all of these projects that have been going on for the last five to 10 years, and it's gonna continue to get worse. And I just would like to see us enforce the code that we have right now, put the, the, the plan in place to facilitate that. So that we are collecting some revenues off of these permits to help. Offset some of these infrastructure expenses.
Yes, I think Will was first, and then we'll go Grant, okay?
So Mike, just to clarify something you said earlier, so if somebody is self-reporting and calling in ahead of time, like they should be doing, you're doing a hold harmless with them. So what's the difference of doing, of switching it from doing a hold harmless, which you're already doing, to doing a permit and then we'll collect a fee? Is it much, I mean, as far as time, is it gonna be much different?
No, I don't think it'll be a, a lot different, again, a lot of them, what they'll do is say, Rachi, for, in this instance, because they know they operate out of Marion. They're just gonna get an annual permit for every truck that's oversized, and then they can just operate. So those that are normal, used to being in Marion, like I said, there's probably gonna be a learning curve. So that's why it's hard to tell how many we're actually gonna get right away, you know, I don't know that we're gonna get as many that Cedar Rapids and Lynn County get right away.
Or that. Start hearing that we've got the permit now, then they might start actually doing it. So it wouldn't. The only reason you might go up and work, I guess, is, is if more people are calling in to get the permit.
Yeah, but again, if it's something that we can do like a, all our other permits and do it online, I mean, we can make a process and figure that out, but.
Sure.
Again, we didn't want to dive into it if council didn't want to proceed with it, so.
Sure, so it makes sense to me then, if it's already doing something for people that are self-reporting, then why not? Do it like our code says and have a permit and then collect a fee on it too. That's, that's why I see it, so I would say move forward with it.
Okay, Grant.
Maybe this will lend itself to dialogue prior to Thursday, but here's what's running around in my mind. Currently, the, the focal point issue is, is that we are trying to capture those vehicles that are oversized or overweight and permitting them accordingly. And that derives on a projected basis relatively limited revenue, perhaps only enough to cover the annual cost of administrating, administration of that program. So I, I think our general concern is truck traffic of all type. Proper size, underweight. Those that might be operating overweight. I think, at least in my mind, I'm beginning to think the issue is, is just the volume and, and impact that truck traffic generally has on our roadways. And so that just leads me to ask, which might, which might be determined to be a crazy question. But is there any place? In Planet Iowa that merely issues and manages? Truck permits for. On an annual basis for all truck traffic?
Well, the Iowa DOT would for all the primaries. But again, they, they would have to be above that criteria. So if you're just a 53 foot long semi, you don't need a special permit to operate.
All right. And, and so because of the DOT regulations, that negates us from having something just for truck, truck operations within the city limits of Marion.
I, I would lean towards the city attorney, I, I think can always be more restrictive rather than less restrictive, but I don't know that we want to add more work just to add more work. Maybe what you're getting to is the truck routes, which is a whole different topic. But we do have established truck routes within Marion where they can operate and cannot operate unless they're doing a local delivery. So for example, if it's a residential street that's getting a delivery, they obviously have to drive on the residential street to make that delivery. However, if it's through traffic, they don't need to drive on the residential street to do that. So that's a whole different topic that we will bring up eventually to update our truck routes. This one is just purely on those that are above the legal size or weight.
Okay. Thanks.
Let me just know the quick comment, even if they have a permit, they can still be traveling down roads. That we don't want them to do anyway.
Yep, and that's a whole different topic, and it can be.
Exactly, it's a whole different topic, so even if they have a permit, it doesn't change some of the other faults that we would like to correct. So this is not part of that conversation.
And that one, the local PD, I'm assuming, has a better option of writing that ticket if you have a truck going through residential streets that shouldn't be, that's not designated truck route, that would be a much easier ticket to write. Yep.
Go ahead, Renee. Go ahead, Renee.
Thank you, okay, so not to make your head spin too much, but I think there's been, there has been a lot of good commentary. And I'm, I'm changing what I am saying based on what Will said, I mean, if we're doing work anyway. And right now, we're doing work and not collecting a fee for something where we can do similar volume of work and collect a fee for something, and it might cause. Additional fees from people that weren't, were just ignoring it because we weren't really doing much anyway. You know, I don't see why we wouldn't do this, it just seems like an easy enough thing, I know it'll be a process and change, but to your point, Mike. We can set this up online and it wouldn't take a lot of staff time, and so I'm sorry to vacillate, but now I'm in the camp of let's do it.
I think it's instructive that if you look at Cedar Rapids application for what they're charging, it's obvious that they're not using it as a revenue driver. They're covering the costs of administering the program, so, you know, for what they're charging for a single trip permit or a round trip permit. That's them track, having the information to track the routes and just knowing that it's registered. So if somebody does get off track, they have something else I would assume in their arsenal to be able to use with that. If they were seeking to make it as a revenue driver, the fees would be much higher.
So. Mike, is, is your recommendation that we? Do this, or, or are you indifferent, or?
I am personally indifferent on it, we either need to add the permit or change the ordinance or both.
But the ordinance is there that provides for the permit and.
Correct. We need to fix the system that's broke.
Okay, one more comment, Will.
So, so if you put it online and make it automated for a permit, it's gonna be less work.
Yeah, I don't know if we're gonna make it completely automated, because we'll have to check the route, stuff like that, so there'll still have to be some admin work, that's something that we can work through. I mean, they could probably, we could put the PDF form online where they fill out and submit it, so it wouldn't be completely seamless where we just, it's hands off, there'd still be the process we'd have to go through.
And then one other question, kind of follow up on like policing it, so if the DOT pulled over someone and they didn't have a permit that's required. Is there, they're gonna get a ticket, but that ticket's probably gonna go, the fee is gonna go to the DOT and not to Marion, correct?
I would assume so, I don't know that we get.
We wouldn't get anything off of that anyway, so it's not more of a, if we're policing it to make money off ticketing or something, it's more of a putting the permit up front to try and get the money up front. So, all right, thank you.
Here, now just make a quick comment, I mean, Cedar Rapids has a heck of a lot more businesses. In that community that would require oversized, overweight. Trips compared to Marion, I mean, we have Rachi, we have some other trucks going through the community. But if you take Rachi out of the equation, all we're talking about is trucks driving through and, and probably a lot of single issue permits, so. I mean, I don't ever want to get to the point where all of a sudden your department down the road is gonna come back and say, oh, gee, we need another halftime person. Start taking care of permits and things like that, okay, and, and I go, you got other things to do. That are more important to this city than Chase permits, so I mean, I will stand on my original. Vote, if I were, if I were to vote on it to say no, I just don't see the, the cost benefit to this situation for this community.
Just to wrap it up, so I, I would, my vote is vote, if that's what it is, right, to move forward. I think one thing that Randy said that, you know, it could, it could deter folks from thinking about Marion as kind of this pass-through place. Because we, we don't have that currently, or we're not enforcing it, however you want to state it. It seems like it's a sort of a net zero gain or loss because you're doing the work already. So I, I would support moving forward with following our current ordinance as opposed to changing the current ordinance, which is what you're asking, right?
Okay, so.
So it sounds to me like we're moving forward with the permit.
We have a comment from our city attorney.
Your honor, just one, one legal perspective on this is. And I was just discussing this with the city manager, by not having it in place and by not enforcing it, are you inviting? Otherwise lawbreakers to re-write, to come this way if it's not too inconvenient, because they know that they can circumvent going through more costly jurisdictions.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what Randy and Colette have, have said, so, but that's a valid point. Is that accurate? I don't, need to speak for you, okay?
Didn't use the legal terms, but that's exactly what I said.
Circumvent, that was the.
All right, so I'll assume we're saying yes to the first one. So number two is, I'm, I need to know what kind of public comment or public notice do you want to have? If we do this where we adopt a policy with the permit that's only by resolution, so technically, there's no public hearing. But I'm asking the council's opinion on how do you want to, obviously, we have a large company in town that we can personally notify. But is it something you want in the newspaper, something to, that we send out to like our bidding group that we, that has most of the oversized loads? Obviously, we can't hit everybody, but we can do some kind of public comment period so they can weigh in, or is it a mute point, we're doing it anyways?
Go ahead. Yeah, Mike, my opinion would be on this, that we should follow some reasonable public notice and public comment. If for another reason, we're really accentuating that we're gonna start enforcing what we already have in our ordinance, and so to make absolutely clear to everybody. That that is pending within a, with a designated effective date. That way, nobody, for whatever their relationship with us, is they can't really claim ignorance on this impending action. So I, I, I vote for the public notice, public comment process.
Hey, go ahead.
I too, would some type of comment or notice, I just wanted to ask a question, would we need to adjust any of our language in requesting bids or, you know, anything of that process? So folks know in advance that there could be additional fees associated with oversized trucks? I mean, maybe that language is already there since we have the ordinance anyway.
Yeah, I mean, what we, what we would generally do is, as part of the public comment period is, we have a standard bidders list that we send out. And so they would be part of them that would just get an individual email from me or my staff that says, we're having this public comment period on those topics. So they would know well in advance that the, they would be required to get permits.
Let's go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, I, I concur, I think we should put a, an end date to it, but, but obviously notice people, allow them to speak, but I think we should make it very clear that this isn't new. This is just getting a light shone on it and getting enforced.
Okay.
All right, so the next one is basically are the, the fees being proposed okay? And in your packet, we have a proposed permit that was basically borrowed from a nearby city. So a single trip is $35, round trip is 70, annual oversized is 50, annual oversized overweight is 400. And an annual overweight special exempt is 50. And it, it coincides with what others are charging. So again, it's not there to bring in loads of money.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, my first comment, as we kind of talked in the past in these situations to, I think our intent is not to, to be excessive compared to the surrounding communities, but basically to stay on par. And that'd be, that'd certainly be my recommendation to move in that direction.
Okay? I saw a thumbs up from Renee, anyone else? Okay.
Yep.
I think you have your consensus.
All right, next, when would city council like to have this adopted and, and enforce? So do we want to set a date that from X date forward, this is the policy? Obviously, if you want to give time for that public comment, that takes some time to change the, to adopt the policy. If we want to say June 1st or whatever that date is.
So maybe in preparation for the, you know, the building season or whatever that's called.
Construction season.
Yes, thank you, April, see, whatever the terms are, right, building, construction. So maybe the April 1st, I don't know if that's too soon, and then I know you're not asking, but I'm gonna answer your second, what you have up there since I'm talking. And I, I think you should modify because I don't think we should approve every single one of those, so.
Okay, Renee.
Yeah, to Colette's latter point, modification for sure, and then to the, the bullet above, and I really appreciate, by the way, how you've had this laid out and allowed the discussion to kind of flow like this. I think whatever's reasonable for you and your staff, since you have to get it together and make the change and whatever that's gonna entail. You know, I don't want to do anything burdensome for you guys or for the people that might have to have a new line item in their budget because of this in terms of the people who are gonna be paying these fees, although. Based on what you said, it's pretty nominal. But, you know, April 1st or even May 1st, if you need a little more time, I don't think there's a huge hurry, but I'm just glad we're moving in the direction of clarity.
Okay. Anyone else? Randy, anything?
Yes, your honor, I'll just throw a couple of things in here, just because I've been around to hear it as well as several others that. Some of the feedback that we will get from the public will be that there will be increased bids to cover these fees and expenses, and I. We thoroughly understand that, but again, these are calling out line items that would actually come back in as revenue sources. So all bids must be modified and adjusted appropriately. I'm assuming we will have public comment, if we allow a, a public comment in there, we will be getting our contractors. As we drive around the city today, you can see that there are a lot of, a lot of different companies hauling through here and in town. I can list six different contractors that I've, have seen dump trucks in the local area here within a few blocks, so. Though we are not the size of Cedar Rapids, we are a major arterial for a lot of these trucks coming in and out of here. Because of the quarries located demographically where they are, so. I just wanted to share that as well because of the history and we will, we will see these comments come forward. And I want everybody to be, be prepared to know that, yes, though, that we know that bids and pricings will go up. These are, this is a specific line item and, and doing their business, just like every other business owner has to deal with line items. These are, this is a specific line item in, in doing their business, just like every other business owner has to deal with line items. So I just wanted to kind of share that with everybody from history, thanks.
Thanks, Randy. Mike, what is a typical vehicle or truck that's gonna, that this is gonna apply to? Is it a dump truck?
No, so.
Randy mentioned dump truck.
Yeah, so a dump truck, unless it, unless it is actually overweight, which they could overload it and be overweight.
What's the most common one you'd see, like if I saw one, that I would automatically know it's overweight or?
Window.
Oh, and wow, okay, so like the, the ones that carry the blades and the, okay. That's oversized?
That's oversized, now overweight, you may not be able to tell as much, because they're probably enclosed. So it's, it's, the more obvious ones are the ones that have the oversized banners on the back. Obviously, the ones that have the, the pilot vehicles in front and behind with the poles up in the air. Those are, those are more the, the larger vehicles, and hopefully, we don't have those driving down 151.
The manufactured homes that are moving down, yeah. Okay, but oversized, overweight is probably harder to.
Yeah, and it all depends on how many axles they have, so.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this one? Do you have what you need?
So I think, I assume, not everyone spoke in the last one, but I would assume you're okay with delegating that to staff and not having every permit come back to city council?
Anyone object to that? I see lots of thumbs ups and, and.
So that will take an ordinance modification, which is three readings, but we'll work with legal to get that modified then.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to note that Rachel gets a prize for being to the minute on her time estimates this evening.
That's very good. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
We have one more item, which is a closed session, Councilmember Goodell.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa. We have the legal counsel's statement, please.
Yes, Your Honor, I have reviewed the material that is the subject of the proposed closed session and do deem it to be appropriate to review in closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5 Subparagraph 1, Subparagraph C. Recommend that counsel adjourn to closed session accordingly.
Okay, any comments before we vote? Let's have the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Goodelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned to closed session, and we'll return to open session upon completion. Is Randy gonna join us then through a different mode? Okay, good. We're staying in here, and then, yeah.